All right, so we are calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock for the regular planning commission of April sixth. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't hold an answer.
And roll call.
Chairperson Patterson.
Here. Go ahead and read the excused as well.
Yeah, Sarah Rommel's excused, Councilor is not shells excused. Secretary Grand, I'm here. Becky Henderson, she's excused. Sam Belkey?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, we are looking for an approval of tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Everybody's looked over the meeting minutes from March seventh and made a motion on those.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March seventh as presented.
I'll second that.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any public comment?
No.
Anybody?
Now, we are on zoning ordinance review still with us being down so many members and it is a cold nasty night out there. We're gonna try and keep this a little bit short. I want to go over four and five, what the planners have sent back. Any questions or anything on that? We did have a few things that I noticed.
That weren't represented?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I do not have an answer on why, whether it couldn't be done or, you know, why things were left in. So, once we get that all figured out, we can go over that at the next meeting when everybody's here, hopefully.
So, we're not gonna go over?
We will.
Four and five?
Yep, four and five. So, in four. The, everything pertaining to farms, we had asked to be removed as well as the riding stables. Riding stables were the only thing that was removed.
Correct.
And the adult care facility and everything related to that was removed as requested.
So, I was noticing when I was going through this, that's like for the veterinary clinics, kennels and animal shelters, that section six point one oh six will probably change now because we've taken out, right?
Yes.
So, they're gonna go through and conform all that.
And read all numbers, yep.
Because, and I noticed down in residential boarding houses has no section. There's no, the content's already been removed from the, um, there were a couple like that. Why don't they have content?
On which, on boarding houses?
See, like boarding houses, if you all the way over to the right, there's no section number. There's no,
Yeah.
There's no, um, content, you know, there's no description.
So, right, it should've just been, all right, let's.
Some, there's others that are like that also. They're just, it's just not there.
That's one thing we're gonna have to talk to them about.
Do they license residential facilities?
Yeah, that might make it a lot easier. Sorry, guys, I, this thing just set in like in the last two days. Um, okay. Under townhouses and two family dwellings.
We wanted conditions on main something to be added.
Right, on Main Street, uh, no special approval needed if they were on Main Street or corner lot. That was not added. Thank you. And.
Oh, there's one right there.
Okay. I got this one now, I'm good.
Were you looking for marker or was it highlighter?
Just highlighter.
She's got, I got.
Pause for a second.
Uh, let's see. We've changed all that. And video rental establishments, I believe, was deleted.
Do they even exist anymore?
Then, well, and that was, do they really? Okay. I think that was our, kind of, um.
Otherwise, I know it was red box.
Yeah, but that, you put a box inside somebody else's store. This was for actual, like, we used to have one in our made up. There was a video store there where you could go up and down aisles like Blockbuster, rent movies.
But you still have a few holdouts. They're still selling, uh, video and, well, actually, DVD and Blu-ray.
Huh.
Oh, be darned.
Well, not here.
Yeah, not in town. Not now.
Not surprising.
Uh, let's see. Over in commercial, uh, that was the only thing that I had really noticed.
Yeah.
And over in commercial uses.
Oh, so that's, that's cautious, that's good. What about, um, no, you're right, that's all.
Okay. Uh, okay, there was something I had noticed. Here we go. The cinema, motion picture complex, outdoor and indoor, with three more, three or more theaters, we had asked to be removed. That is also still in. Cause we had said to leave in the drive-in or drive-through facility, but the cinema and motion picture complex was left in, so we'll have to go over that.
We had to buy half of downtown to put three theaters in a building.
Exactly, exactly. And da-da-da.
And this outdoor cafes and eating areas, I do not recall. Where is that on here? That we added those permitted, should've.
Oh, yeah.
I guess we did, never mind.
Okay.
Um. So, those are still in?
Okay, yeah, they should be there.
Yeah, cause I, we actually had permits for them.
Thought they were.
There.
Yeah, I was, I just misunderstood myself.
The, um, automobile, truck and other motor vehicle fueling stations, gas stations and similar facilities. The special use was added.
For mine and repair, which one is that?
The smaller one that starts with automobile.
Uh, page four dash five.
Yep.
Thanks, the second one then.
Uh, the feeling was four dash four.
Four dash four, yes. Under commercial uses, automobile, truck and other motor vehicle.
So, you're the original one, not the new one?
Well, I'm, I'm lined up right here.
So, what are you doing with those? Leaving them in, taking them out?
We're leaving them in.
So, how could you take them out? Well, that's the menu.
We added special approval use.
Oh, oh, I got it. Right, right, okay.
And in the second one, Sam, the automobile, truck and other motor vehicles, longer of the sections, those were changed from permitted to special approval necessary in, um, C two. The car washes, automatic and self-service, I believe that was also, yeah, that's an add for that to be special approval. Yeah, okay.
Questions?
Yes.
Gas stations now are going to be in C one and C two with special approval only.
With special, special approval.
Why would they have to have special approval? Just asking.
That's what the planner's got.
I mean, we've got as many as three gas stations downtown at one time.
Mm-hmm.
Four gas stations at one time.
Four?
Gets a girl.
That had to have been quite a while ago.
Yeah, back in the Stone Age, right?
That'd be when I was following out of the vehicles?
That was one time, yes.
Okay. Um, that's what the planner has in here, is special approvals for certain areas.
Well, for C one, it should be C two industrial. We added industrial.
Yes.
Those aren't different though. We didn't change that. That special approval for gas stations in C one and C two was there. That's not new.
Mm-mm. What was the one that was added?
Special approval for industrial.
Yeah, no, in, uh, what was it at here? Gas stations. Gas stations, da-da-da-da-da. We had the, yeah, no, they added in, um, industrial as special approval.
Yeah, yeah. They were, they were always.
But they're still, yeah, they're still, they were always special approval for the other ones. So, the, the only addition is that it can now be an industrial with a special approval. To answer your question. Okay, then actually housing. Something's different on our pages here. Two, two. So, over on pawn shops and dealers of secondhand merchandise, that was all just added into one section on page. The new one is page four dash five. In our book, it was in four dash six. They took and combined all of those and took out the packaged liquor stores.
Right.
Oh, missed one. Up on laundromat and dry cleaning, special approval was added. Right, is that a name?
Hmm.
I don't see that one now.
No, no, I haven't seen what was added either.
Those aren't highlighted, like, they're not in track changes.
Nope, they're not.
Yeah, going back and forth between the two files.
Right, that's what I'm trying to do and, and our pages are all different now. Okay, outdoor cafes, that's what you were talking about earlier. Where was the hotel? Oh, there it is, Hotel Motel. No, you're right, that was all the same. It's me mixing pages. That was still the same. So, now the outdoor cafes and eating areas that you had mentioned earlier, Sam.
Yeah, I had misunderstood my own notes, so.
They were changed from special approval to permitted in C one and C two.
Special approval.
Yeah.
Okay. And down on tobaccoist or cigar cigarette shops. Looks like, yeah, the permitted was added in C one and special approval was changed to permitted in C two.
Okay.
And.
That's three all restrictions.
We had asked for oh, again, that's completely different.
But you're playing welding sheet knives, that's gone. We asked for that to be gone and it's gone.
Yeah. Yes, we did. Manufacture or assembly.
Want you to put it in C two?
There we go. That was not deleted.
What's that?
We had asked for the manufacture or assembly of automobiles. In the book, it's the very first two we had asked for on page four dash eight to be removed. Those are both still in.
Four dash E, let's see.
In our book, in the new pages, it's dash four six.
Yeah, the manufacture, assembly.
On the top of the table.
Yep.
And, let's see.
Yes, I have that note here.
Yes. But they did, however, am I looking at the right one? No. All right, yeah, they left all the S and Ps are all the same. The power plants, hazardous materials, storage or waste, tire facilities are gone. Recycling collection facilities and composting centers are gone. And I'm not too sure. We have a white box with no S or P under da-da-da, re, nope, self-storage warehouses. And we had said permitted but not need a list of allowable stored items as long as there were no hazardous materials. We had to check with the fire, uh, fire department for allowables. They did not put anything in there, but they changed it from the gray non-permitted to just a white box. So, I don't know what exactly we're thinking on that one.
Yeah, I'm surprised it takes so long to get it right.
Yes. Uh, slaughterhouses, rendering plants, tanneries, commercial stockyards and so on was deleted as requested. And I believe so was, yes, and the automobile, truck and other motor vehicle repair section was also removed as requested.
So, what does that do to the existing ones?
Well, nothing, cause they're existing.
So, they would just stay grandfathered in until they cease doing business?
Correct.
That's called non-conforming.
Yeah, but that, that puts a strain on the value of that piece of property.
By what slaughterhouses do you know of?
Not slaughterhouses, automotive repair, commercial, all you said was deleted.
Automobile, truck and other motor vehicle repair stations for major repair, including but not limited to body shops, painting, welding and engine or transmission repairs or replacement was removed.
We have those facilities in town now.
Yeah, don't we have, listen, all their reasons?
Yes.
I don't think they can do, like, painting and major.
Major. No, they can do major repair though.
We don't have, uh, coding for EPA on that, on those, but they do do large repairs.
Engine or transmission repair was removed.
Yeah. It was removed. I can rethink that one.
Maybe we just take out the parts we don't want, the, um, body shop, painting, welding, or body shops, painting. Welding might be important to repair, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's a big, don't know.
Yeah, that's a big question to research. Self-storage, that was removed. Truck terminals was left in. All right, we will.
And truck terminals are left in?
Yeah, it wasn't taken out.
We don't actually have.
Truck terminals and distribution facilities, wholesaling and trucking operations and truck storage.
No.
I'm wondering if maybe took the wrong, took the wrong boxes.
Yeah, cause we, you don't, there's not any.
There's no, there's no room.
In town, they don't, they say we don't have real estate for that.
So, that's possible. Let's have him relook that one.
Well, I have that come a long time ago, what's that? This is article six. What, what is this one for?
Four. Four, seven. Four, eight, top of the page, second one down.
Yeah.
Four, eight, in our notes, or, I mean, in our new pages.
Correct.
Fourth item, the light.
I have a four, eight.
Uh, page four dash eight.
Yeah, it's not, I just, I was.
And that's the new packet.
This was the list that we got from, like, when we first started doing this, this was the list from what people had discussed before, whenever that was.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Right.
And I don't see it on there, so, um.
So, we did, so that is not one that, that we asked to be removed and it was supposed to be, right.
Maybe there was a misunderstanding though.
All right, so I've got it noted for here. I'll get with Becky, we'll get, get with the planner. That's why we go over them every time again anyway, just to be sure.
So, just so we're clear on that one, are you looking at removing that or?
The truck terminals and distribution facilities, wholesaling and trucking operations and truck storage, I believe is the one that we wanted removed. There is no property within the village large enough. But instead, it was automobile, truck and other motor vehicle repair stations for major repair that was removed.
We don't have any property in the village. It's zoned, that's lodged before. You do have property that's large enough, but not zoned for that.
Well, zoned.
Right.
Not in the right zone.
In the areas where it was permitted.
Right.
Um, in the last one, a very special event and other uses. Mining and extraction uses was removed as requested. And I believe that's all we were looking at there. Yep. So, we are now on article five, dimensional standards. I did not get an answer on, we wanted to check with the planner for possibility of R one A and R one B. I did not get an answer about anything and obviously they were not added to our new notes.
Right.
So, that is something that is still up for discussion.
R one, R one, and, okay. And then on this chart here, the lot standards that RM forty-two hundred wasn't changed.
Wasn't changed, yep. And we did not get an answer on why some of them are blank.
Blank, right.
That, I believe though, is because if you look at our new pages that were sent, the book, you cannot see the gray shaded areas. These are gray shaded areas for not permitted.
Oh.
So, I, I believe that answers our question.
Oh, okay, they're, they're not really blank, they're just.
Right, that you can't tell that they were shaded as, as not permitted. Okay.
Okay, so I thought when I was going through here that these numbers should match with, uh, stuff on the chart, right? Cause we're referring, the chart, we're referring people to this information for more. And they, they didn't always match, they weren't. Didn't, I guess the, at, at the end, when we're done with all of our changes, the planner will go through and confirm all that?
I, yeah, I'm hoping so.
Um, okay.
They did make a couple of requested changes in yard and setback standards.
Yes.
The word each is to be taken out of side yard. And the numbers were changed in industrial from twenty to ten and forty to twenty.
I like the suggestion. It's somewhere, somewhere, somebody said to list the density in the chart somehow.
Yeah, and that was not.
I think that that's important because this doesn't really tell you much about density.
So, we still need to get that taken care of. Yeah, I did have that down here too, Sam. Okay, I didn't see anything different in our illustration.
No, I don't think they did.
Okay, which moves us into supplemental provisions and exceptions under chapter two, by two oh one. I do not believe, we had mentioned cut, uh, parking setbacks in half. And I do not see that in here, in the changes anywhere. I'm thinking that may be something that is just not allowed. But I will double check on that one as well. That's the only changes I saw in the first. And moving into five point three oh one. The only thing I see is that the wording we had asked for in D two, areas lying within a delineated wetland area or drain easement, they're taking out, adding the word shall.
Yeah, they did that.
Easement shall be considered. And that is the only change I saw in five point three oh one. And you can see where they did start to change the numbers on this next one. You go down to, um, five, three oh three is frontage and access still. Point three oh four is corner clearance and then they've changed, or added rather, three oh five for driveway entrance, but I see no explanation as to what this section is, and you're right.
Right, we wanted them to. Yeah, it needs the content. They were supposed to, we gave them some notes.
Yep. New, five point three oh five. Okay, and then you can see that five point three oh six for making it your members. Okay, now, that puts us on six and seven. I see with all the members that are not here and we have to go over it again anyway. Let's just go briefly. If there's any questions or anything you wanna do, keep your notes and we'll do this when we are all together. The, um, did she include six in the notes from what was discussed before?
No, we didn't discuss.
I don't believe so.
No, from our other board, did she include that in your notes?
Yes. Yeah.
So, the majority of six is taking sections out, is pretty much.
Right, because farm, fish, recreation, that's all that stuff's gotta conform.
Correct. Correct. So, is there anything that you have questions on comparing what you found into the notes from the previous boards? Notes for changes?
No, it was pretty, a lot of it was just grammar stuff.
Right.
So, we'll really discuss this next time.
Yeah, I think so, because we, we wanna, I would prefer to have everyone together when we're talking about actually taking sections right out of the book.
Okay.
I would like to have it all together for that. Uh, okay, so keep your notes, we will go over that. We'll, very, very first thing on next month's meeting. So, no questions as far as what you guys saw in those?
No, not, um.
So, you're gonna go over farm again at next meeting?
No, there's sections to be removed.
They're gonna, they're gonna remove them to conform with the stuff that we've removed.
Out of section six.
Well, you changed farm to special approval.
And that's what's in here.
I understand logic of that. This is, this is an agricultural community. We even qualify for agricultural loans inside the village. And I have a large lot that maybe I wanna put twelve rows of sweet corn in. You could, does that constitute a farm line? Farming?
Well, I guess that's why we'll go over what, there, that's what I said. They want to make it all so that it conforms with the new.
Chart. We already took that farms off of the chart.
I don't understand why.
Animal and agriculture. We took farm, fish, recreation and landscaping ponds, farms, greenhouses and nurseries, produce stands, farm markets, garden centers and feed stores were removed, riding stables were removed from. Well, they're actually removed completely, didn't we?
Come up to R one.
They, they weren't. I was just asked if they were moved to R one?
No, I'm looking at it right now. It's on page four dash two.
Yeah. No, they're removed altogether. They are no longer in.
Or even greenhouses, that's, that's. Are even greenhouses, that's, that's kind of a popular thing right now.
No, they're not removed, no, to see, no, I did not say removed.
What'd you name the greenhouses for?
I did not say removed.
What'd you name the greenhouses for?
Because you told me to go back to the farms, so I read off the ones that are on farms.
Okay.
We had it down as removed, it is not removed.
Okay.
It is, yes, in R one, you have permitted farms, fish, recreation, landscaping ponds. Farms, greenhouses and nurseries in.
Produce stands, farm markets, garden centers, feed stores.
Well, we did, we did ask for those to be removed.
We did, but they were not removed. The only thing that was removed was riding stables.
Right, because they they asked a question about it, are you sure or not sure?
Yes, they are still in.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, section six. If there's nothing that you guys wanna go over tonight, like I said, I would prefer to have a full board when we start talking about what needs to be taken out, make sure that everything conforms with the chart. That's a big one, but I think we'll be able to get through it. Unless you guys wanna sit here and go through them all, but I just, I prefer to have a full board when we do this.
Okay, no questions?
There was something though, that was taken out, or we had requested to be taken out, in the farms. Just got me thinking about the farms now. But it. I think, again, the notes are all based on what we'd asked for removal. No, it's really just um, the mining stuff. You guys wanna go over six real quick, I guess?
Well, if we're gonna leave in farm, fish, recreation or landscaping ponds, then I didn't. There was a couple sentences we wanted taken.
Yeah, the sale and transportation of excavated materials offsite shall be considered a mining or extraction use, right? From there to the end of that paragraph?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And I, that can still be taken out.
I got you, doesn't conform. That's heavy equipment.
Says we're permitted in residential districts, retail sales shall be prohibited. And the use shall be limited to greenhouses or plant nurseries accessory to other active animal or agricultural use. That's a, I don't understand what that means. Where permitted in residential districts, it's prohibited, or permitted, it's prohibited.
Where are you at, Sam?
Six point one oh two B.
Where permitted in residential districts, retail sales shall be prohibited. Where greenhouses, nurseries, garden centers and feed stores are permitted, where permitted.
In residential.
In residential districts. Retail sales shall be prohibited, so they cannot have retail sales, not that many greenhouses or nurseries would do this anyway. And the use shall be limited to green.
You can't have stores in R one anyway.
I know, that's, well, that's what she's saying, the entire sentence doesn't really make sense.
You can't. Yeah, the whole thing contradicts itself.
It's permitted in R one, it's the only place greenhouse, farmhouse is a nursery.
Are permitted on.
Is it R one?
Right.
So it's where permitted, retail sales can't, you can have a greenhouse, but you can't sell retail.
Right.
Right.
Well, why would you, you wanna do that?
You may just have a hobby with, you know, like instead of minimum of greenhouses, that can be quite a hobby. But it doesn't necessarily mean you wanna do it commercially or.
And then it says the use shall be limited to greenhouses or plant nurseries accessory to another active animals. So you can't just do a flower barn and sell flowers, you have to have an active animal or agricultural use, and that's an accessory to that.
So that you're growing feed for them and stuff. We don't have that kind of land, land, land mass for it.
Well, I'm still not sure I know what that.
I don't understand the push, or those sentences either. Right, so we will ask for a better explanation.
Okay, so, we'll change the numbers.
Yes, that will all, that was all in the earlier notes too, that the numbers would be changed.
So when I got to six point two oh one B, we were on number three, where they were going through the minimum of fifteen hundred square foot of the gross floor area. The principal buil- building shall be occupied by the owner, not more than twenty-five percent. And the principal building shall be occupied by accessory apartment, it's like, is there an easier way to say that? So that, I mean, basically, why was figuring out, basically, you need to have two thousand square feet in order to do this, because you need. Right, I mean, can we say it in a way that's not quite so hard to figure out what you're, what you're allowed to do?
So we would like to have this explained in layman terms.
You have to have a minimum of four hundred fifty feet in the accessory apartment.
Yeah, I had also had it in three and four, if they could give a little more clarity to that.
It's just kinda, you know, it's.
But we, since we are going over these, we do need to mention that section six point one oh five. Riding stable section needs to be completely pulled out of here, because it is the one that we took out of the chart, so that would have to be removed.
Right.
So we want a better, just a simpler term.
And lower name level has to be occupied by the owner of the building?
Yeah.
That's what it states in here, yes.
Fifteen hundred square feet of the gross floor area is occupied by the owner and not more than twenty-five percent. Because they're different, right, it's apples or oranges at that point. Other principal buildings shall be occupied by the accessory apartment. So you have to, and the minimum is four hundred, so you have to have nineteen hundred and fifty feet in order to do that. Both of those have to add up.
So the owner couldn't take a job somewhere else and move out and rent the back portion of?
And rent the back, right.
That's.
Not according to that. It better be one thousand five hundred square.
For multiple housing units, multiple housing unit, regardless of who's living there.
Apartment's accessory to detached single family, so if you had an apartment inside your house area.
Okay, so this is why, why does the owner have to live on the property here? I think we need to revisit this whole thing.
It just doesn't, you know, if it's, it's hard to figure out what you, what you can do.
Right.
And I didn't, under the bed and breakfast, my question for, was for the guests, is why do we care how long they stay?
Yeah, I did notice that too, right.
More significant than that, yeah.
Right, it says there shall be a maximum of five rooms for lodging with a maximum of fifteen guests at any given time. Guests may stay no longer than fourteen days in succession, or a total of sixty days in any twelve month period.
Like, why do we care, how is that, how is that our business to save?
I guess so that they're not using it as a rental, right, right.
As an apartment instead of a bed and breakfast.
That, that would be my own thinking, with that.
So we're telling somebody, if you have a bed and breakfast, you can't have the same person come and stay in your place. Fourteen days.
I get the gist of why they're saying it, but I think it could probably be better explained.
Fourteen days, or a total of sixty days in any twelve month period. Sixty days, so if you had, so if you were coming into the area because your mom was here and you couldn't stay with her, so you stayed at this B and B, you can't do that.
That's an extended stay.
More than sixty days in a year.
Right. Like I said, I'm thinking it's, so that, like, we said, it's not a, it's not an apartment, it's a bed and breakfast. You're usually there for vacation or visit family, not to actually live there.
And at the rate of a bed and breakfast, you wouldn't be.
Yeah, nowadays.
Wouldn't be.
I don't know, I don't think, I don't, I don't think so, I don't know. Will you add a question to it?
So on the performer for six point two oh four home occupations C. Number one, where it says home occupations will not generate more than twenty customer client visits per week. No more than two customers at any given time.
That's usually a parking restriction.
So, well, what, I mean, how are you even gonna police that, why even say something that you can't police?
It would be hard to police.
You're right.
Twenty customers in a week?
Right. Right.
Isn't that?
For a home occupation, uh, but I mean, you know, who's their customers and who's their guests, uh?
And with the home occupations, can they have off-street parking, or can they park in the street? Then it'd be small parking.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's all about parking, then say it's all about parking, these are the parking requirements.
That's one, the first ones we went, went over when I was on plan, was the um, in-home businesses.
There's more of that now, and with the COVID, there's gonna, people are going, yeah, right, I don't think they're gonna.
Right, there's been a new board.
And so much is done online that people have in home businesses, it's shipping and.
Yeah, and there is nothing stating parking.
Were you talking about the bed and breakfast?
No, 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 we're over at six point two oh four in home occupations.
No, in home businesses.
Oh.
So we also need something listed about parking.
And that's what the issue is, and that's why we're, is that why we're saying those numbers?
Right. Limited to.
We say those numbers, because maybe, you know, some of the customers are walking up, and so it's not even an issue.
Right.
Pertinent to what are, what we're really concerned about.
R one car, oh, then six customers get out.
Sorry, yeah, I've already met my quota, we, one of your friends in the car.
It's Wednesday and I'm down for the.
Right.
I mean, that just seems like that's.
Three of you have to go back in the car.
Not our business to tell people they.
Yeah.
One in the bathroom.
Yes, it is. Oh, and permitted uses, they have nothing about computer-related services. It's, it, almost like it gives a definition of these are the only ones you could have. So we need to talk to the planner. If it needs to be, it do, does every single type of other occupation, meaning home occupations, have to be listed like this, and this makes it look like you can only have these specific.
Right.
Occupations. So I can have it down.
Does I have any home occupation that specifically listed may be permitted as a special approval use?
No, it, I mean, the book says that if it's not in the book, you can't do it.
Right.
So, no.
So, yeah, I, I, that's what I had down in my notes, was that we need to know, you know, what other occupations could be added without special approvals. It's very limited on what they actually list in the book. You know, could we have a wider, wider range, or a definition that allows for a wider, wider range? And in the same one on the next page at the ending. We could thought adding internet sales as number seven to permitted uses.
So I have a question about um, prohibited uses kennels, because didn't we have kennels as a?
What is that?
Yeah. As a residential, or do we take it out?
No, it, you're in the chart, it's under animal and agricultural uses.
Kennels, okay. So when they're talking, um, okay, so this means we can't, alright, I get it.
My notes are good for several pages, so if you guys have any questions or comments, we'll start moving forward.
Seems a lot in here about mobile home park. In effect, your housing.
I think the statement, state your decision back to identify a percentage of property within your jurisdiction for manufactured homes.
Different.
We have to have it, or we're?
You have to have a designation of either a master plan or area that you can propose for manufactured homes.
Okay, so you have, you're, have to have it listed, but you're not required to have it?
You're required to ha, well, having it listed, you put it in, it's, you can have it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you have to, you have to include the option for people to do that if they want to. But we don't have to have one, there's no requirement that.
There's no companies that's come in to say we wanna build a um, mobile home park or, you know, facility. But if they do, you can't turn them down, if you have an area that wouldn't fit that requirement. In, in our media, you, you have to say that, that you can propose it, but we just don't have enough space. Unless they went back down to the southwest corner of town and bought up all the property in that corner. There's not enough space to have uh, the park, water drainage, um, retention ponds. There's just not enough space, or even the sewer plant, I don't know, could even take out of that kind, that much more. They'd have to have their own well and septic, probably.
Okay.
Says a minimum area is fifteen acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I saw that somewhere.
It'd be pretty small, they should have one. And we had areas, that, that spot back down into there is probably. And we have areas, that, that spot back down into there is probably forty acres back there.
I was gonna say, I looked up how many acres in a square miles, there's six hundred forty.
And we've got a couple other pieces. And one thing that it doesn't define when it says you have to have a minimum of fif- uh, fifteen acres, it should say you must have a minimum of fifteen buildable acres. It's like Mars always got, what, eleven? I don't think it's got fifteen, majority of it's pine.
Right.
Oh.
So.
Okay, so, we're done. Multiple family dwellings and developments. What is standing seam metal roof?
The pressed metal, where the seams come up and go over, when you bolt them in, that comes flat and seam comes up, is grooved.
So those are metal, that's just what everybody knows.
Is a metal roof now.
Yeah.
So what Ben's got on the car wash?
I don't know.
And the house over on.
The house on, and three doors down from me has a standing seam metal roof.
Three doors down from you. I don't know that one, but I'm thinking of, uh. The one on Spencer Street, is he right on the corner?
Yeah, that, why do we want that?
It's, it's actually in here, but yeah, it's back when, uh, Ben was chairman and they were making notes on changes. It had been asked to be removed, standing seam.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it was asked to have it removed for being prohibited.
Oh, remove it from the prohibited, yeah, that would be.
Because we actually have houses here in town that have them.
And they're very efficient, so they're becoming verified.
Right. So yes, we do still wanna have this removed. If I'd have read the whole entire sentence in the beginning.
Just remove the provision on it, not the whole.
Yeah, the standing seam metal roofing is prohibited, I would just take that sentence out.
And back in the day, they kind of looked like barn roofs and stuff.
Right.
Right. It looks nicer than what they currently is.
It looks more defined and, again.
The house right next to Tish and Javon, they have one, the house right next to Tish and Deva- Javon on Spencer Street. I believe that's one of those metal roofs like that, that we're talking about. I can't think of who used to live there, it's just sold. Maybe a year ago.
Is that good for us?
Well, that's one down on East Main, last house on North Side.
Alright, and that one, okay. So, yeah, that needs to be taken out, especially given that we have houses in town, that have those things, anyway.
Right, so that, so that takes a lot of, yeah.
Only one quick thing, as I saw in single-family dwelling detached, section six point two oh seven. In A, second sentence, or second line of the first sentence. Manufactured housing, parks or park?
Park.
That's what I thought. So we need this one out. So far, I have nothing else, if you guys have questions.
What does that one say?
It says parks.
No, we've got three, what is, what are you thinking of? Is the S?
Yes.
Six dot, dot two oh seven?
Yep. A. Second line of the first sentence. Manufactured housing, park. Uh, let's see.
Okay, I see it now.
I'm down to six point two oh nine, two family dwellings or duplexes.
You could add that about.
Allowed on the corner.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Whatever.
In the other board's notes, I had also had that someone had requested, four. The addition of separate exterior door on the front facade is prohibited. The primary entrance for the second dwelling unit may be located on a side wall or both units. May share a common entrance in, on the front facade, to be removed. It's the last sentence in that, six point two oh nine. So, it was in the, in the notes, so I figured we would go over it, see what you guys thought.
Right.
Now do we know if there's any properties that fit this right now, if we removed it?
Fair Street or Prospect.
It has its own separate entrances.
Isn't that what you just said next to you, they could, they don't have one on the front and one on the side?
No, yeah, they're saying that they have to share an entrance if it's in the front. And they, the one on Fair Street doesn't, they have their own entrances.
There's two separate front entrances.
So there's no, no reason to have this in here that says they can't have that.
Okay.
Kind of the same thing as what we're doing with the roofs, they're, they're already here, we might as well make it work.
And what?
I know it's kinda ridiculous, why would you?
It's a static thing, but. If you're allowing the two bedrooms, allowing both bedrooms and a door.
Why make it look like it's one house? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I, um.
That doesn't, that doesn't take that away.
It doesn't what?
Well, if we take out the addition of a separate exterior and the front is prohibited.
Mm-hmm.
Then the, the lines before that still, still.
The exterior of a two family dwelling shall be.
Designed, constructed, maintained in a manner that provides the appearance of a single-family dwelling.
True, very true.
It's the same thing.
It is. So, then we just need the definition to match what we had added to the chart about the, um, Main Street. Out of Main Street or corner lot. And I don't write off hand, remember where those notes are at. What did we say about that?
Hmm.
I, all I, I know that we said something about if it's on a Main Street or a cor, or they can only be on.
Uh, it was on Main Street or a corner lot.
Right.
So, I think a Main Street, not Main Street.
Yes, a Main Street.
So it could be a Fulton.
Right, right.
That would suck out.
Alright, so, alright, we want this whole definition then to match.
And what are they referring to as a Main Street? It just can't be on a East Main, or it?
Uh, it's not them, it was our notes.
Can't come from one driveway, branch off to another driveway, and not have the separate apartment have its own driveway to the street?
I don't know, we gotta find what we wrote down.
I know.
Uh, right here. Oh, there it is, it was no special approval needed if it's on a Main Street or corner lot.
But what are you calling a Main Street?
On. Main Street or.
So if you're saying Main Street and you're referencing a major street in town, that would say that you can't have anything on a local street?
There's no special approval needed.
It would need a special approval.
If it's on Main Street or a corner lot.
If it's on a Main Street, so if it's on a local street, they'd have to have special, go through a whole special approval process to get in conformity of on a local street?
My notes actually say on Main Street, Sam, did we say a Main Street?
I just thought that was confusing, because if you do have a street called Main Street, but.
I know, and that's what I have in my notes, there's no special approval needed if on Main Street or a corner lot.
So Fulton, you can't have one in Fulton? I mean, those are two mains.
Without special approval, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That doesn't make sense, they're.
Fulton's a, a major street, that you're saying that you couldn't have it on Burke Street, which it has been.
So again, then, we need to explain what a Main Street is.
Exactly, define what Main Street means.
Okay, define a Main Street.
Does it mean only a, um, paved street, you can have it on gravel street, because we've got a couple streets that we may put in the gravel there soon.
But, yeah, because they're just gonna go that way on their own.
Exactly.
Define a Main Street. And I had actually skipped right over it in the chart, I had put down that section six point two oh nine needs to match what we decide on from there. So now that needs to match, whatever we decide, whatever, how we define what a Main Street, a Main Street is. And anything else that's added to that section of the chart needs to match in six point two oh nine. Anything else in that one?
No.
Okay, we're moving on to chapter three. I have nothing in the first sections.
I have under, um, six point three oh two A, there's a typo, lots.
Oh, yep.
Yep.
Acre and acres.
Acre, not acres.
Yep, I do have that. It's not big enough in my notes. And six point three oh seven needs to be removed as we took out video rental establishments, which means now numbers again need to, well, if that's the only one that comes out, then we just need that off.
Someone's gonna have to go through that after.
And in chapter four, community uses. We are removing six point four oh two.
Yep.
Gulf Drive and ranges. Oh, we also had notate, noted that we need the planner to check the height requirements.
For?
Under the six point four oh one, churches, temples, and other places of worship.
For roof height or the steeple height?
Because they've, they've got, yeah. Need planner to check, height requirements is what the notes, it's just, it says height. The maximum height of the principal building shall be permitted to exceed the maximum height requirements of the district. Up to a maximum height of forty-five feet, is that really provided that minimum requirement, front side or rear yard setbacks shall be increased to equal the height of the building. So, we just, I don't know, it was just in the notes from when Ben was going over this to have the planner check height requirements, make sure that's still within.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, can you really check with that, is it to the roof, or is it to the steeple?
Or any add-on to the roof?
Anything else in the six point fours? Okay, chapter five, commercial uses. Anything here?
There were a couple typos in this, but. Six five five oh three, what is?
Hold on, back in, uh, five oh one B. There was a notation, that's very first page notation, to take out no more than one access drive curb, drive curb opening shall be permitted per street. It was just noted in the last, last board's decisions that they thought that should be removed.
I do too.
Okay.
Because getting curb and garage is getting more popular, because they don't like gravel drive approaches.
Right.
And there are so many older homes in town. They have very narrow driveways, so if they could put in a U driveway, that eliminates a lot of congestion on how to get a vehicle that's three cars inside the driveway out to the street.
True. Alright, so we're all in agreeance that we're gonna save, have that removed. Yes?
Yep, there is a lot of them in town that have it anyway.
And E, repair and service use limitations. All equipment and service base shall be entirely within an enclosed building, and all repair work shall be conducted completely within an enclosed building. We had thought adding or to the rear of a building with screening. Because the Clarys has got the, the arbor fighting trees and that blackout fencing, that would be, you know. To the rear with screening, and he doesn't have to have it, he doesn't have to have it in the building.
That does count as the screening in neighborhood, okay.
Right. And let's see, in G, the very last sentence. Building walls facing any residential districts or uses shall be of masonry construction with soundproofing. We had thought masonry was a little bit too detailed, uh, we had thought adding or sound deterring material with screening, not just masonry. I don't know what sound detonating material is, but I'm sure there's more than just bricks that could be used.
I see, it's a little different word here.
Oh, it's a sound insulated material.
Sorry, insulated material. Alright. So, we're gonna look into that one as well.
I think there's some foam sheets even that are noise insulated, that we'd have to go through extremely.
And that would be exterior walls.
Maybe a masonry wall.
And in I, traffic impacts and pollution prevention, the first sentence. A traffic impact study may, instead of shall, be provided in accordance with section ten point oh four.
And the police department does that. When we put those counters out there, where it says, you know, shows your speed you're going, and it counts how many cars at the same time. But that, I don't know that that would be something we can order, huh?
It's already there, it says traffic impacts and pollution prevention. A traffic impact study, what it says is a traffic impact study shall be provided in accordance with section ten point oh four, traffic impact studies.
And it's, it's required.
Right, so that's why I said may instead of shall, it may be required.
The police department does it, so we just ordered more, what will come even?
Yeah, four more.
Because really, if you don't have that more detail, what's the point? Okay, so you have a traffic impact study done, and four cars went down the street. What does that mean? Two cars too many? Is there a limit, how many cars can go down the street? That's just a very big, very undetailed section in there. Alright, so planner's looking at what's, what's the point, what is the going to determine if they have that study?
Yep, we got cars. Yeah, it doesn't really actually say. I mean, section ten, we don't work.
You know, what is, is, is the information?
So it would be, um.
Ten. Three.
I would just ask him for what reason.
I can't even.
I would just ask the planner for what reason.
Well, it tells you to.
What will the complication?
See section ten point oh four. Where authorized by this ordinance, the planning commission may require a traffic impact study prior to consideration of an application. The village may utilize its own traffic consultant to review the applicant's traffic impact study. The cost of the review being borne by the applicant per section one point oh five. Schedule of fees, charges, and expenses at a minimum, the study shall include, A, an analysis of existing traffic conditions and or site restrictions using current data, B, project, projected trip generation at the subject site or along the subject service drive based on the most recent edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. The village may approve use of other trip generation data if based on recent studies of at least three similar uses within similar locations in Michigan, and it goes on and on and on to explain what the impacts. the impacts that the, uh, what the uh.
I still don't see what it's gonna accomplish, call the, call the engineers. Call them and see what, what's the purpose of that and what, what's the outcome.
Alright, that I want on my notes up here. Okay.
What I'm curious about, same section. So you're talking about a traffic impact study, they're also talking about a pollution incident protection plan. I hand you a piece of paper, here's my plan. So how do we know that the person had followed through with their plan and actually implemented it?
Or even if the content of that plan.
I'm sorry?
Or even if the content of that plan meets standards. Who's responsible?
Cause it just, is it just me who sees that being a bit of a problem? Given the fact where the village gets its water from?
The applicant shall submit a pollution incident protection plan. Or PIP, P I P P. Describing measures to prevent groundwater contamination caused by accidental gasoline spills or leakage. Such as a special, such as special check valves, drain back catch basins, and automatic shut-off valves. Yeah, not exactly.
You guys need to talk to somebody who knows what that's all about.
Yeah. Yeah, this whole thing needs to be reviewed.
Yeah.
And you're right though, there's no, that's the problem with planning remodels, that there's not a big division between the rules that we, that we have, and, and if you pass somebody and let them go and do what they wanna do, then there's no real way we have to enforce that unless the code enforcer, we don't really have an active coding, there's not real, any real connection between the requirements and, and making sure that people fulfill requirements.
Alright, so we are going to have to seek some help regarding this one. We can move on to six point five oh two, car washes. It suggested that the, in the first one, lot size and frontage, the ten thousand be changed to thirteen thousand. And minimum of one hundred feet be changed to a hundred and thirty feet of frontage along a major street. And again, the traffic impacts are listed in there. Why wouldn't, I mean, if you're gonna stick it on all the rest of these, why wouldn't a drive-in or drive-through lane facility need a traffic impact study? Oh, here it is, there it is, got it?
See?
So, yeah, we need to, we definitely need some help in six, because everything refers you to the traffic impact study. So without actually knowing what we're looking at or discussing regarding the traffic impact studies, we're moving blindly. Uh, let's see, six point five oh six. We had notes for um adding privacy screenings. Let's see, need, sidewalk standards, needs to be reworded in village policy.
A sidewalk sale policy?
Uh huh, yep.
They could use some fine tuning too.
Uh huh.
Cause we had such awful issues on it the last time we had the village sidewalk sale. And they were taking the whole street, and the whole sidewalk, out of the street, and.
Yes.
It was insane. And you need to define what can be placed on the sidewalk in front, cause the village owns the sidewalk for the majority of the buildings, right up to the front door.
Well, this is just.
There's two that I can think of that has, like, one has one foot and the other one I think has like six inches between the sidewalk and their property and the front door. So we've got at least one building that is pretty ridiculous with junk up front.
Anybody got anything else in that section? Oh, wait a minute, what do I have here? That's outdoor, that's right. Down on E, surface. We had made notation that um all areas of display of automobile, all areas for display of automobiles, trucks, recreational vehicles, boats, similar items, shall be paved without added gravel. And that's the only changes I see in that whole section. Ready, six point five oh seven, package.
Go back, wait, wait, go back.
Go back.
Being displayed for sale?
We are under outdoor sales and display area for sales or rentals of goods, products, equipment, masonry, automobiles, and other motor vehicle recreational vehicles, boats, building supplies, hardware, and other items, section six point five oh six.
In what district? R one, R two, C one.
You have to go back to the chart.
Because if that's saying that if I put my car up front in my yard, go for sale sign, and I've gotta pave it or put gravel under it? Cause that is one of the village's ordinance, is that you can't park on grass in the village.
Right.
No outdoor sales area shall be located within fifty feet of any residential district for use.
Okay, that would just mean.
This isn't outdoor sales, this isn't your driveway. Where did we have that on chart, community uses? Commercial uses. That's for minor repair. Outdoor sales. Are special land use in, okay, it doesn't include the uh. There we go. And industrial C two and C one.
Okay.
Alright, section six point five oh seven obviously needs to be taken right out. Again, with adjusting the numbers because they do continue. And six point five oh eight, pawn shops. Under B, displays. All windows and display areas shall be kept neat and orderly, next sentence is, no outside display of goods, wares, or merchandise shall be permitted.
Isn't that one that we combined with something else? Pawn shops and secondhand merchandise.
Pawn shops, yes. Uh huh. So which, that should be added to that.
Yeah.
Pawn shops and.
They should agree.
Yes.
So this is awkward then, because if we say pawn shops and secondhand merchandise, but they can't be uh, they have to be five hundred feet from any residential district or use. So you can't have a five hundred feet from a site having a pawn shop, do a designation, or five hundred feet from any school. So that would mean no one along any C one that but's R one could have that. Or even if. Use that on the chart. Like I, I don't, um. Pawn shops have a bad reputation, but I have no actual understanding of why. Secondhand merchandise, that's just like a resale.
Resale shop.
A mom-to-mom resale kinda shop can't be within proximity of a school or a house, or that seems a little.
Five hundred feet, it's somebody's house.
Stolen goods. I think the concern was people trying to sell stolen goods.
Oh, I see, sell stolen goods.
Two children at the elementary? I mean, what's the significance of a school?
It's like a pawn shop that, that, that's the.
Or, or anywhere for that. You're selling stolen goods.
It was pawn shops and dealers of secondhand merchandise except for used or vintage clothing and children's goods that were combined in the chart four, special land approval in C two. It's the only place it was, uh, permitted.
C two. So back in the industrial section where nobody goes by there, is what it can happen.
Yes, and it's.
It's gonna like hide your, visit stepchild child.
But it allows for, what do they have, we had antiques, antique shops and art galleries were permitted also in C two, but in C one as well. So maybe secondhand should have been combined with that, antique shops.
Most antique shops are secondhand, they're something used there, you're buying brand new antiques.
Right. So possibly that shouldn't have been added to, that wasn't something we had requested, it was just done.
I would circle that when I talked to the planner, that's the logic was.
What, are we talking about pawn shops and antique shops, or?
No, secondhand merchandise, I think, should have went with antique shops rather than in with this pawn shops.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense.
Oh, well, basically, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can use the two interchangeably.
Yeah? Now you're buying something used from somebody and then you're selling it retail.
That's a better, that's a better page for it.
Alright, those notes are made for the planner. Let's move forward, we're at six point five oh nine. Anything here? No?
Recording studios?
Yeah.
You gonna cancel on our next page?
I don't have any changes for this. Six point five one oh. There was spelling and uh couple of little, let's see, not spelling. Wordage changes, there we go. And A, uses. Uses subject to the requirements of this section shall be, shall include, but shall not be limited to big box.
Yes.
And in B, the, where's it start, last sentence. The design shall ensure the vehicular circulation patterns are appropriately designed to eliminate potential conflict between traffic generated by the site and traffic on adjacent streets and streets.
Right.
Good looking man.
Oh, right. And in F, pedestrian walkway, it had been suggested that that be removed. A six-foot wide concrete sidewalk shall be provided from the public sidewalk to the main entrance in a manner that is effect, that effectively separates pedestrians from vehicular traffic. Driveway crossings shall be clearly delineated, is that how you say that?
Yes.
And pavement stripping. There's.
I don't see that being.
Right.
Even places where it is, people don't even pay any attention to it.
Right. And the only other thing that was there, section six point five one three. It lists that a cigar cigarette shop must be a thousand feet from any childcare center, school park, it also says or hospital. Don't believe we're gonna have a hospital in the village, we could put that off.
You guys better put a big section in there for annexation.
What?
Big section in there for annexation.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
You've done already, you're out of room.
Right. Okay, anything else before we move on to chapter six? Section six, rather, six point six oh one. Okay, so six point six oh one, six point six oh two was looked at to be removed. The hazardous material storage and intensive industrial operations. Section six point six oh three, landscaping and screening. C, sorry, landscaping and screening. We thought changing wording might be necessary. It's a little hard to understand, I guess you'd say.
Say it's maybe visual screen from up to a private street.
I guess, no, I don't really see this. Not understandable, but. Possibly not necessary for changes there.
Yeah.
So then in section six point six oh four. First thing that was noted was. So then, in Section 6.604, first thing that was noted was on D1. Junk vehicles and scrap materials may not be stacked higher than the height of the screening wall. We thought it should also say stacks need to be out of sight. It's just, it just says junk vehicles and scrap materials may be, may not be stacked higher than the height of the screening wall, but it doesn't say that the stacks themselves need to be out of sight.
And how long are you gonna let them keep that stuff stacked?
Well, if it's out of sight, we don't care.
Yeah, but still, cars, rats...
There's no time limit even under Section D.
There's not.
Snakes.
There's not.
I just put time, question mark.
For stack materials, time limits.
Well, it says on number E, it says no vehicle, the vehicle bodies, or other materials shall be stored in a manner as to be visible from any residence, business, or street, so probably don't have to add that in number one.
Where you at? So those notations are made. Are we ready, 6.605 to be removed?
Yeah, didn't we take it off the chart?
I believe so, yes. Section 6.606, self-storage warehouses. B, minimum lot size and setbacks. The minimum lot area shall be three acres, the minimum lot area shall be three acres. It was suggested that it be changed to one acre minimum if person is living on the premises. Other than that, we jump down to Section 6.606, slaughterhouses need to be removed. And Section 6.608, warehouses and other storage facilities, anything there? Other than the traffic impact study.
Storage facilities, we need to find out if a storage facility, where somebody buys, I don't know, 10, 20 cargo bins and stack some all the wall of the new property, is that allowable?
Shipping containers?
Shipping containers.
Yes, it does appear in the list. All storage shall be completely closed, screening, loading, permitted uses, the use shall be limited to storage of, no, that's storage of what? There isn't anything, yeah, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing.
Cause actually, I think you got one right there in town anyway, it's been there for a long time.
A shipping container where they're stacking, my top one, another...
Just a shipping container, it's not stacked. But I mean, you didn't have to even stack them, you could go to your backyard, just go all the way across your backyard with storage containers, and is that permitted?
Okay. Section 6.705 is the next change I see, is to be taken out, it's the nine-minute extraction uses, gotta take it out of the chart. And page 6-28 in the book, that is all in Section 6.705. So there's that, and the top half of page 6-28 need to be removed. And again, changing the numbers needs to be done in this one, because we would now need that 706 changed to 705. Okay, everybody ready, we are moved into Article 7, accessory structures and uses. Anybody? I'm not sure who it was suggested by, but they thought Section 7.05, keeping of animals, should be removed. But I'm looking at some of that thinking some of that needs to be left in. Anybody have anything on that section?
I would have been removing it.
Yeah, that's, I don't remember who it was.
Probably because of the chickens that people have tried to have here.
Well, and that's what it's, that's, it's putting the restrictions on that, that's why I'm thinking not removed.
Right.
So I'm wondering if anybody has anything that they were looking at in that particular section.
No, I wouldn't take it out.
I don't see any reason for it to be removed.
Yeah, cause it actually gives a number in the first, Section A.
Yes.
Or 705A.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes the chapters that we hit on.
People had one long meeting, did a time, catch up the other members next meeting?
Oh, I think we will have an email that goes out, soon as Recky gets this all typed up, taking look that over. Alright, so we are now finished with zoning ordinance reviews. I have no reports, anybody have anything they'd like to discuss before we look for that final motion?
Motion to adjourn at, what is that, 8:30, 7:30?
Six, sounds good to me. We are, oh, uh...
On second.
Second, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now adjourned.